Good evening, everyone. It is six thirty-one P M., so I will call the Tuesday, November fourth meeting of the Superior Common Council to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. The clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Ladeen.
Here.
Counselor Anderson.
Here.
Vice President Moffett.
Here.
Counselor Sweeney.
Here.
Counselor Fennessey.
Here.
Counselor Elm.
Here.
Counselor Ludwig.
Here.
Vice President Herrick.
Here.
Counselor Johnson.
Here.
President Grasky.
We have a quorum.
Item three point one is a public hearing for comments regarding the twenty twenty-six general fund budget and subsequent amendments.
If there's no objection from the council, I will open the public hearing. Would anybody like to speak in the public hearing regarding the twenty twenty-six general fund budget and subsequent amendments? This would include any of our budgets for twenty twenty-six. Would anyone like to speak in the public hearing? Would anyone like to speak to the twenty twenty-six general fund budget? Hearing none, if there's no objection, I will close the public hearing.
Item four, part one, is the approval of the October twenty-first, twenty twenty-five regular council meeting minutes.
Motion is by Counselor Herrick, second by Counselor Elm. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
And item six point one is a report from Mayor Payne.
Good evening again, counselors. A number of things on the agenda tonight, so I'll limit my report to the things that we'll be discussing. Of course, going backwards, of course, we have the adoption of the general fund budget. We, this will be our third meeting considering it. At this point, I would strongly recommend passage tonight. I'll double check with our finance director when we get in conversation, but if this is not the deadline, we are very close. And so this should be our, I hope, final conversation on that, but we can take as long as we need to tonight to discuss that. I have two items under business by the mayor. And again, going backwards, I will be recommending for appointment Millie Roundsville to the Superior Housing Authority. And I just wanted to note that will, she will replace Commissioner Bill Fennessey, who has served on the Housing Authority for over forty years. I just wanted to note when we get to that appointment that his term actually expired back in May, which is why you see her term going until May of twenty thirty. I asked Mr. Fennessey to stay on the board for a few months for several reasons, but one of which was making sure that we could replace him with somebody with his intellect and experience in public housing. And that is obviously very challenging to do. Millie Roundsville is maybe the only person who could conceivably do that, and I think she'll do an outstanding job. And then the resolution, which I'm sure you've heard about by now, first, my apologies for springing this on you. That is the nature of emergencies. So only learning about this late last week, I imagine, has felt a little bit last minute. Happy to have as long a conversation as we need on this. But my main message that I've given to folks that have asked me about this is this doesn't execute anything tonight. It doesn't spend any money tonight. However, I don't want you to feel like a vote in favor would mean nothing. I want to, I want, if you support this, you should be saying to me and to the community that you expect this money to be spent. So obviously, the situation regarding food security in the city of Superior, possibly throughout the whole country, is a changing one and an uncertain one. The situation is different today than it was when I first announced this potential grant opportunity. It will likely be different in the coming weeks. What I'm looking for is flexibility to respond to an emerging crisis. There's been some optimistic news today regarding food security in the past few days. It looked like SNAP benefits may be released to people. Then it looked maybe, like, maybe they wouldn't. It also looks like there's a possibility of an end to the federal government shutdown, which could release SNAP benefits. That said, the reason I'm still recommending this tonight is the crisis is not potential, it's here right now. We're seeing most food shelves in the community are running very, very low or outright dry. A lot of folks in the community are stepping up. You've seen a lot of businesses and governmental institutions were doing it upstairs, trying to collect food. But it's going to be a tough holiday season for a lot of our nonprofits that serve people facing food insecurity or even very real hunger. So what we're looking for is adaptability. I will answer any questions you have on it, and that's why I'm ending with this, because we can go directly into that conversation. I'll answer any questions you have, well, as many as I could possibly answer. But one of my main intents, rather than, even though this will be open as a grant opportunity, I've included the application in the packet that I would use. I would not have the power to award the funds. You would have to make the final decision on awarding funds at a subsequent council meeting, which I would hope to be able to bring you some request at the next council meeting. But I don't want to just open it up to the community for whoever applies either. What I hope to do in the coming days or next week would be to convene the Anti-Poverty Coalition. So for those that don't know, there's an organized group of folks. They are the leaders of nonprofits, faith-based organizations, community organizations, I think a few businesses, people that fight poverty in Superior and Douglas County on a regular basis. They do convene to discuss as a group problems. So think Faith United Methodist, Society St. Vincent of Paul, Harbor House, Salvation Army. These folks gather, I want to gather that meeting and discuss whether there might be a more comprehensive solution that we can all agree on to spend money to make sure that people are fed as we enter the holiday season. That is the intent. I am open to any changes or other suggestions you may have. So unless there is objection from the council, I would like to take questions before we consider a motion, beginning with Counselor Elm.
Thank you for proposing this, Mayor, and your leadership in bringing this forward here. I think this is an important piece for our community. However, as you mentioned in the news, it was not funded, maybe half-funded or partially, or it's changing day by day. Is there some guardrails that we can put on this? That, there's a limit of two hundred thousand, you know, by the end of the year, but could there be other limits that once SNAP is reinstated, that the program ends? Or is that the intent, or is there still food insecurities beyond the, even if SNAP was available?
Yeah, so I'm certainly open to more guardrails. The ones that I was able to come up with very quickly are time and money. So it is a cap on the amount of money, and it's a cap in the time during which we can spend it. By next year, we have a nonprofit grant fund, and that's enough time to build a more structured program. Obviously, SNAP, the potential loss of SNAP benefits, what used to be called food stamp benefits, was what triggered this. But what's kept me in this proposal is the uncertainty around all of it, and the fact that just the anticipation of a loss in food security has already hit food shelves. So while SNAP benefits may not go away, I'll be honest with you, I don't know the status of them right now. You know, I do not have SNAP benefits. There's nobody in my immediate family that does. Maybe there's somebody here that can tell me, has anybody tried to use an EBT card today? I don't know. What I do know is that there are food shelves that are empty today, that are desperately trying to fill them. And so that's why I wanted to convene with folks that have a little bit more expertise and are a little bit more on the ground than me to understand the best use of the money. And so that, while I'm certainly open to more guardrails, that's the argument for flexibility, because we don't know the best solution right now.
Right, we don't know the damage that was done to food shelf business as usual, because there's more users currently.
I should also say, it is an option to not spend this money. Part of a conversation that, part of the message that I would bring to the Anti-Poverty Coalition is, if today is not the best time to do it, if November of twenty twenty-five is not the best moment, let's hold off, because this money may prove more useful in February of next year. And an honest message coming back to the council to say, we don't need it now, but we think we're going to. I trust if you granted it tonight, you would hold on to it for a few months if you were asked to.
Thanks.
Counselor Johnson.
Thank you. This is a well-thought-out plan, and I commend you for doing this. I think it's something that's going to help our community. I think we can all agree on that giving some funds where needed is a good thing for our community. You talked about some guardrails. I have a couple of questions about the process, if you don't mind. I feel like it kind of is clear in this, but we're looking at just somebody, an organization or group in the city or county in Wisconsin. We're not talking about folks across the bridge, or is that something that's still open for discussion?
It doesn't explicitly say it, but I can tell you, I wouldn't recommend, and I'd be surprised if you would approve a grant outside the city itself. It's still a very young conversation, so if the county came to us, or we went to them and they wanted to partner with us, I'd very much be open to pooling some funds and enhancing the program. But I'm of the strong opinion that City of Superior Fund should stay in the City of Superior.
I appreciate hearing that. Maybe this is, I'm going to save the, maybe the hardest question for last, or maybe it's the easiest for you, I don't know. When, you know, Counselor Elm kind of alluded to, and maybe when things get back to normal, what would the status of this grant application or these grants be? Is, you know, one of the guardrails I could think of, and I don't know if it's wait to make a motion on this, or just asking you personally, from my perspective, would be to come back to the council, period. You know, obviously, you said next council meeting you'll come back and continue to give us an update on this. And we could maybe have that discussion as an old business and just kind of keep that dialogue open, would be my best guess on how to kind of create that end date if we maybe need it. Is there, a couple other logistical questions, though. Is there a cap per group that's going to be able, are we going to cap how much money or what the grant will be at? And then we, you know, we do give funds to some of the nonprofits that are likely to come back to us and ask for money. Again, there's no restriction on, well, you know, you got to wait three years or another year because you received funds from a different pot of money from the city.
Yeah, so the resolution contains formal guardrails, but I think there are some informal ones built in between lines. For example, it should be about food insecurity. So as much as I appreciate the work of the Historical Society, absent a very strong argument that they're going to feed people, that would not be an eligible grant. I would not recommend it. Again, I would be surprised if you approved it. In response to your first question, very easy amendment to require an update on future agendas. I'll work on that as we're talking. And then...
Just the other part was, I asked a lot there, sorry. There's no restriction for groups of people that have received nonprofit funding or grants in any way from the city to receive this grant specifically.
So, no, nor is there, I think you asked also a max amount for any one organization. I thought about that, and I ultimately declined to write it in there, because I felt flexibility would be a little bit more valuable. Again, we'll know it when we see it. If an organization can definitely do fifty thousand dollars worth of work, a hundred thousand dollars worth of work, and it's the most impact we can possibly have, I want to put you in a position to say yes to that. And I don't want to be restricted and pushed to say, no, absolutely not. But again, it's a lot of organizations. Some are larger than others, some have larger missions than others. I want to be able to help as many folks as possible. And it's why I ultimately want to pursue a team approach to it, to make sure folks aren't left out either.
And speaking of that team approach, now, this is just trying to get all the cards on the table and not in any way saying that I'm against this. I think the group that you recommended is a good group to vet some of these requests and proposals, and maybe decide some dollar figures for each group. Some of those group members that are going to be vetting some of these applications, though, will be the ones asking for the money themselves?
No, I'm sorry, I misspoke. No, you will vet the applications. I mean, my office will vet them and prepare them. I would go to them for advice and say, rather than, it's still going to be open to everybody. So if there's somebody that's not a member of the Anti-Poverty Coalition, that can't make the meetings, brand-new nonprofit I've never heard of, they can still apply, of course they can. But the point was to say, is there a maximum impact we can have? If we have a conversation as a group, if they're all like, listen, the rest of us are doing fine, give it to the Faith Food Shelf, that's who needs it. Or, no, we should do one big buy from a food wholesaler and then spread that around. Those are the kind of ideas that I would be looking for. And then, as a group, I would bring a proposal to you to spend the money.
Okay, I just kind of wanted to clarify the logistics of that. And then lastly, where in the budget is this money coming from?
The Economic Development Fund, and I targeted that. Well, I have two reasons, two things I should explain here. First, the number two hundred thousand, part of the reason I settled on that, it's in the ballpark of what we've spent on nonprofits before. Now, of course, in the past, that's been ARPA grants. But here in the budget tonight for twenty twenty-six, there's funding for a nonprofit grant program again next year. So this is the year we didn't give any money to nonprofits. So that's where the amount came from. The Economic Development Fund is because I'm losing faith that we're going to be able to spend the incentive money that we set aside. We've set it aside for a few years now. We've been able to provide incentives using other methods for development projects. And the Economic Development Fund has always been sort of either a last resort for a project that can't get any other funding. I think the last time we used an incentive that way was the, I want to say the Empire Block, just a straight cash grant. And the amount was two hundred thousand. We intended to spend it last year, we didn't. It's in the budget to spend next year, and it's looking unlikely. There was a matching grant I was hoping for that a business did not get, and probably won't be able to apply for our money. The point is, we have historically wanted the Economic Development Fund. We've liked it at around sixteen million dollars, and it's sitting at eighteen to nineteen million right now because of those excess funds. In other words, it's healthy, it can be drawn down, and I think the money would just be better spent here.
Thank you for those answers, I appreciate it.
Counselor Sweeney.
A couple of questions. One, who can apply, does this, people who apply for this money, do they have to be organizations?
Yes, I think so. Certainly not individuals. I left a little bit of breathing room for for-profit food-based businesses. We saw some real generosity out of a couple of restaurants and shops in the community. That's a reach. I'm going to be honest with you, that's a reach. I don't know how I'm going to structure a grant for a business. The onus will have to be on them to explain how they would use it in a way that we can account for it and show that it went to feed hungry people. For the most part, this is going to organizations. I'd have a hard time recommending anything else.
So food shelves are not the exclusive potential recipients?
No, not at all. There's actually a lot of, I was reminded the day after I announced this, that there's a lot of food security services. I think Meals on Wheels, I think there's a program in the senior center where whole boxes of food are monthly distributed to senior citizens. Anybody that's providing food, food shelves is just one piece of the puzzle.
So I'm going to mention a group, the WIC program, for example. They'd be eligible.
If they're going to buy and supply food, yes.
I'm sorry?
If they're going to buy and supply food or make food funds available, yes.
Okay, so when do you plan on having this, people applying for it and up and going? Is there a start date?
Yes, I would expect to, if it passes tonight, I would release the application immediately. And it's been on the agenda for a little while, so, I mean, if folks were really on top of it, they could pull it from the agenda and fill it out. Otherwise, we'll publish it tomorrow and send out a slight press release that it's available. And then I will use any contact information we have for the nonprofits to start spreading the word, but tomorrow.
Okay, so then, just take me through to this conclusion. It works tomorrow, people fill out an application, next couple of days. When would they expect the city to be able to produce funds for whoever this organizations were?
The very, yeah, the very soonest, obviously, would be in two weeks. I think if Counselor Johnson did make the amendment, which I would support, I'd be obligated to report back to you anyways. If I'm making an argument that we're in something of an emergency here, then we should act fairly quickly. And so I'd hope to be able to grant some money at the next regular council meeting. If, as Counselor Elm sort of alluded to, if the crisis starts to abate a little bit, then I would want to move more slowly to make sure we're having the most effective impact.
My last question, is there a limit that each person, each organization can apply for?
I guess two hundred thousand dollars, but I would want to spread around as much as possible. And if it really did become a scattershot where we let everybody apply, we'll evaluate the effectiveness of everybody. In my head, I imagine just trimming everybody's amount, if that's possible, and trying to support as many people as applied.
Thank you.
Counselor Moffett.
I'm really in support of this work and possibility. I am concerned about the timetable and wondering if we could perhaps allocate a small percentage of that fund to be available at the administration's approval in the more immediate future. So like, it adds some complications, because perhaps you'd be giving out small amounts of money to just kind of help organizations now, and then they would apply for maybe larger amounts later. But when I'm hearing that shelves are empty and we're going to wait two weeks to write a check, that's a little concerning for me when people are hungry. You know, it really affects their, not just their physical health, but their mental health and how they're doing in school, and how they're able to do in work, and how they're able to participate in our society day-to-day. And so I'd love to see us perhaps, like I said, the only way I could think is perhaps we'd say like twenty-five thousand could be allocated immediately with the balance coming back to the council for approval. You know, but I'd be interested to hear from you if you think that's doable, because again, you'd probably be dealing with multiple grant rounds then, so you'd have like maybe five applicants now for five thousand dollars each or something, and then you'd have to like reevaluate for the next council meeting. But I just really want to see some more immediate relief if we can, to help people that are struggling right now.
I think as long as it was under twenty-five thousand dollars, that's probably a perfectly acceptable amendment. I'm happy to be able to deploy it quickly. As, I do want to work quickly, and if you made funds available immediately, I would use them. However, the diligence I've described is important too. This money is not inexhaustible. The city cannot solve this problem itself. And I don't want to inhibit my ability to do more good later by doing some good now. That said, I guess I feel the same way. If somebody's hungry tomorrow, I would like to be able to feed them tomorrow. Counselor Grasky.
Yes, thank you. How did you determine two hundred thousand? I'm just trying to, was there research done? I mean, I know this came on pretty quick. I think what, and just by volunteering a lot in for food shelves on the weekly for years, I just, I feel like there's going to be an area, and I agree with the immediateness of this, but I think we're going to, it's something that we, if we're going to do this, what does that focus look like in February, April, summer? And, you know, I mean, I know that there's a pause on how this is getting adapted, but I guess I'm just a little curious how it got to two hundred thousand.
It's not exactly arbitrary, but it is certainly a victim of fast planning. And the two hundred thousand, first finding the Economic Development Fund was because I've been thinking a lot about if the mission of that fund can and should be expanded. I've been thinking about that for a while now, because, you know, to only do one thing, the community may have other needs than pure economic development. And if there's a fund that's overfunded, if you ask me, is anything too healthy? That's the one that, it's not too healthy, but that's the one that really comes to mind, that's flush, it's doing fine. And I think because there's a grant that we're not likely to get in twenty twenty-six that I had budgeted for in twenty-six, that number was two hundred thousand. I budgeted two hundred thousand dollars in incentive for an economic development project that is not likely to happen. So that's where the number came from. In terms of, I'm certainly not married to that number. I think the fund could probably handle more if you wanted to bear a little bit more risk. The higher you go, the more uncomfortable Mr. Cirque and I are going to get. But, and if you thought it was too much, I'll spend whatever you give me. But the, in terms of what we do next year, I feel reasonably comfortable with what we have budgeted for the nonprofit grant program. And I only say reasonably because we could spend much, much more on the nonprofit grant program. When we've given it out, it's been a huge success, it's done real good in the community, there's a real need for it. But I want to move slowly on the development of a program like that. We're not always going to be stable enough to provide it. So I think we can continue to do something next year, but it won't be as much as we probably want to.
And I thank you for that. I just think we should be cautious and almost breaking this up a bit, that's just my opinion, and seeing where it can fill those voids, so that when there are breaks in regularity at these places, that we're able to fill those voids versus giving one huge, you know, one huge bank of food, and then we're right back where we were, and that's my only kind of worry on this. But other than that, I'm fully supportive. I've shared a few that I have some very close to me that relies on, you know, free food assistance every single day. And so I know what this has done to that person, and so I just hope that, you know, we can start getting this combed out and start getting it in motion. So thank you.
At this point, counselors, we've had several suggestions for changes or alterations to the program. So I'm going to ask, is there a motion to approve the resolution that would get us discussing and amending? Second. The motion is by Counselor Fennessey, second by Counselor Moffett. Counselor Elm.
A few questions about the application itself. I know some of the details are in the resolution, but not the application specifically. It says application deadline without a specific date. Doesn't say where to submit the application. I don't know, we maybe want a phone number for questions. Also, the question at the end about how many participants do you anticipate serving, that could mean different things to different organizations. I don't know if we want to quantify how many meals are served or some more metrics on that. I don't want to make it really complicated, but I want it to be consistent and understood, so when you're evaluating these applications, that it's going to be the same thing for each applicant. So those are some of the high-level things that I was thinking about here while reviewing it.
Sure. I'm with you on the first point, maybe not so much on the second point, but of course, I'm open to whatever you want to add. The application is not what's formally on the agenda, the resolution is. And so it refers to, we would put out applications. I included an application in the agenda so that you could see this is what we have in mind. My goal for it was simplicity, though. And now, I am with you that they must demonstrate how they're going to spend it. You're going to ask those questions when it comes back to council. I would be shocked if you didn't. Therefore, I have to bring you an application that can pass. And so either it's going to go to organizations that you all know and trust, that we have worked with, that we've given grants with before, or they're going to have to do more explaining. I would also point out, at this point, we have a pretty good process of tracking how the funds are spent, and we would stick with that process. They'd have to provide receipts and get reimbursements and show how the money was spent. So that, it would work like the rest of the nonprofits, I just strove to make the application more simple.
Thank you. Another dynamic about expediting this, we could always have a special council meeting too, right? We'd still need time for folks to fill out the application, to review them. So I don't know, we could have a meeting in a week, that would be another alternative to getting this done, especially if it's over twenty-five thousand, right?
I don't oppose the idea. I mean, I enjoy spending time with you, but my problem with the special council meeting is I don't know when to schedule it for. So while I hope to release it very quickly, I don't know when the applications start coming in. Having a fixed deadline, as in, we're going to start awarding money in two weeks, tells organizations, you better hurry, but you've got two weeks. So I'd hate for us to, some folks are more organized than others, and I would hate for the organized ones to eat up all the money, only for somebody that has real need, but is pretty busy, understaffed, trying to meet a crisis, and then they get an application in the day after we have a meeting. Maybe I'm inventing a problem there. I'm not going to say no to a special meeting, though.
One last question, as obviously SNAP is in the news and food is crucial to survival, but there's other programs that are impacted by the shutdown, whether it's Head Start or Energy Assistance. Like, this will be specifically focused on... Like, this will be specifically focused on food insecurity, correct? Was there thought put into other assistance for those needs?
Not by me, but I was reminded that same point pretty quickly. Foods is the most basic human need. There are other needs, you're right. And I do think we have other means of supporting many of the other crises that people will face. This was just a more acute emergency that the safety net was fraying. So if I saw a much more acute crisis on something like housing, healthcare, I don't know how to solve that exactly, but I would try to respond as we have in other crises.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Herrick.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I heard this recently, this morning, that the federal government is, I think it was like 4.1 billion other contingency fund to help with this. Unfortunately, though, it'll only support, as far as people on these programs, it'll only give them half of what they're usually used to. And also, those, the monies that they do get could be prolonged, so I think this is a good program for us.
Thank you. I'm trying to listen and write some of, some potential amendments that I've heard brought up. Other questions or discussion before I start articulating amendments? Counselor Fantasy.
To your point, I do, I do agree that, I think it was you or Grasky or both of you guys that kind of made that point about how the, you know, we don't want to structure this in a way that the organized, you know, nonprofits, you know, suck up all the money first, and then, you know, some of the other ones that might, you know, might fit a different need are left with nothing. And so, and that's also why I think it's, it's important to, you know, to do these at the council meeting instead of like just have your office do it, because it'd be, it'd be super easy to get all excited about the, you know, the first one that comes in, and that's $25,000, and then it's excited about the second one, and that's $25,000, and pretty soon, you know, it's gone. Where just like with the small business, you know, grant program, we, you know, one of the years, probably three years ago, is, it was a great project after great project after great project, and then we realized at the end, you know, towards the end of the year, that we don't have any money left. And so that's when we went to the, we shifted where we look at them all collectively once a quarter. And if we're looking at all of the applications, and I don't expect to, we're looking through 50 of them, especially if it's just here in Superior. But I mean, it could be when you look at every church that has a, you know, a food shelf, big, small, salvation, I mean, all that. You know, it could be a few applications, and by looking at them all together in one meeting, it allows you to kind of weigh the difference between what they're asking for and what value, you know, that they can bring. So I really want to be sensitive to that so we can, you know, distribute these equally and make the most meaningful impact, you know, with these dollars.
There is no further discussion right now. I want to go to potential amendments. I've worked on these and no pressure to propose these. Counselor Johnson suggested an amendment. What I heard could be accomplished by a motion to amend to add a paragraph that reads, be it finally resolved. The council will consider a review of this program and any applications at its next regular meeting. Does that sound like what you have for?
That's the November 18th?
Yes.
Is that correct? Okay. Do we want to put that in or regular council meeting or our next council meeting in case we get a rush of them and have to have a special meeting?
That amendment, yes, that amendment, then it's your choice. I'm asking if you want to make the amendment. So be it finally resolved that the council will consider, that the council will review this program and any applications at its next meeting.
So moved.
Is there a second to that amendment? The motion is by Counselor Johnson, second by Counselor Fantasy to amend discussion on this amendment. Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. The motion carries. The second amendment I heard was Counselor Moffett's, and this one I don't have quite as well written. I would add to the first resolution, so it says now therefore be it resolved, and add another sentence at the end of it, which reads, the council authorizes the expenditure of $25,000 from this program to be spent at the discretion of the mayor for the purposes described in this resolution. It's a clunky sentence.
Yeah, and maybe just add to the end of that prior to the next council meeting or something, because this is meant to fill that gap between now and when we have the rest of the process kind of in place and the rest of the applications. Does that make sense? Just, you know, because maybe you get $20,000 you spend, and then it doesn't mean that we want you to spend the other five later. It just means that we're, you know, allowing you to spend up to that amount in this gap if we need to.
I just want to write for the sake of the clerk here. Okay, got it. It would be a sentence after, another sentence after the sentence within the paragraph, now therefore be it resolved. The first resolution, it would read, the council authorizes the mayor to spend up to $25,000 of these funds immediately, but no later than the council's next meeting. Is that your amendment? Is there a second to that amendment? I'm sorry, who made the second? Counselor Anderson, Counselor Moffett made the amendment. Counselor Anderson made the second. Is there discussion on this amendment? Counselor Grasky.
Are we just talking about the 25,000?
Yes.
So the remainder would be 175?
Yes.
To determine. Okay, thank you.
Counselor Fantasy.
Just a more of a question for Counselor Moffett. I totally understand the spirit of that. Would you, would you be agreeable to a smaller number? The only reason I say that is to kind of go piggybacking on my last comment about, you know, protecting the, you know, the fund. If these are for, you know, food, food only, $25,000 is, is a lot of food that, you know, that can be purchased, and this is meant to, you know, bridge the gap between, you know, before we had, we had level of, you know, X, and now we're down 20%. And so it's not, it's not even meant to like fully stock a food shelf unless it's completely empty. I know the food shelf at our church was completely wiped out two weeks ago. And so I know that there is the need, and I appreciate the, trying to get something in there for the urgency. I just want to make sure that if we are doing that, that we're not going to limit, you know, the other ones that didn't press that much of an emergency. And even if it was, even if it was 5,000, 10,000, should be enough for most, if not all, you know, food shelves in Superior to, you know, to get by until the next council meeting, which at its very most would be, would be two weeks from, you know, between meetings. But, you know, good chance, depending on when it, when the need is presented, be much shorter than that. So just want to get your thoughts on that. I'm not even opposed to the 25,000, but I just want to, I want to make sure that we're protecting the integrity of that, of that fund and maintaining a healthy amount there to be able to give to distribute.
Counselor Moffett? Yeah, I think the 25 is a good number. That's kind of what we allow the mayor discretion to spend on other things if needed. And I don't know if he'll need to spend the whole amount, maybe not. Maybe the primary players will say, yeah, toss me, you know, a couple thousand dollars right now and I'm fine, and then we'll do the main application process. I'm not an expert in that. I just know grocery bills are nuts. When I go to the grocery store now and then buy my groceries full price, like, you know, I'm assuming a lot of us do, gosh, those prices sure aren't going down, are they? Like, and I don't think, you know, when I look at my grocery bill for just my wife and I, and then we've got our kid part-time, that money doesn't go far. And so if you think how many families are going to a food shelf, like, I don't know how this needs to get applied. I'm guessing he's going to get some good help, and I just, so I want to give him that discretion. I feel like the $25,000 is, like I said, is really what he has for discretion for pretty much a lot of other things. And frankly, I think if we see other needs in our community by doing this, this kind of reach out to the community for advice, I think maybe we could look at more than $200,000, but of course, that would be a council conversation at some point on like, how would the money get spent and where, and what's the, you know, the time period for that? I just feel like 25 is kind of just the standard, like, whatever, like, the city is doing fine. This is an emergency for the people that don't have food. And so, you know, if that's what we need to spend right now to help people out, I feel like the city can really absorb that without any problem.
Just, I'm going to call on a few more people, just to catch us up where we are. Counselor Fantasy has not made a motion to amend, but could. If later in discussion you wanted to amend the number, that would be in order. Friendly amendment definitely would not. Been waiting to rule that out of order for a while. Counselor Elm and then Counselor Grasky, please.
Just a clarification point. I know we asked earlier about if one applies for this grant, are they eligible for a different grant? But we're creating another situation that if X Food Bank takes 15,000 now to get going, they'd be eligible again for another grant for the same grant after this period, after the administration gave them a certain dollar amount, correct?
Theoretically, but, you know, I'm going to see that. It's unlikely if you came to me and I gave you a good chunk of change in the next couple of days, and then you filled out the big grant for the big amount, you better have a pretty good reason for why you needed it today and why you need it tomorrow. And I think I would expect that same level of scrutiny from the council, but maybe they've got a reason, but I'm going to be pretty skeptical.
Because if their goal is to ask for 50,000 and they weren't able to get it, it sounds like they would be eligible, obviously, we'd have to approve it based off of certain scenarios, but they would be eligible though later potentially.
Theoretically, but again, I think that'd be a pretty hard question to ask them.
Yeah. And we're asking for approval 25,000 or would it be 24,999, just to be under the 25,000?
That's a good point. I think I'd feel better about 24,999. I think any statute or ordinance that talks about this generally uses the term under 25,000. We'll fix that in post. We'll fix that in a minute.
Okay, that goes by too.
Counselor Johnson. I'm sorry, Counselor Grasky.
I'm so ready to talk. No, I'm just kidding. Just to kind of give some idea of what I would imagine this 25,000 would go to, we're talking about perishable items. So like milk, cereal, peanut butter, bread, things that people don't generally donate, they, which I appreciate. I mean, I don't know, any of you are seeing this community pull it together. It's really, really something. But it's, that's where I think this focus comes from. Those are those missing key parts that create the actual, you know, forwardness to, you know, take, or I guess take food and apply and use as anyone that would need it. So that's where my focus is, and I'll be supporting this at the 25, or 24,999 or whatever.
And I should say, while this doesn't put any specific restrictions on me beyond the bounds of the program, I'm also, anybody that asks funds of me between now and the next council meeting, my first question is going to be, why can't you apply and wait for that next meeting? They've got to clear that bar with me too. This will actually take some real administrative work, and so the need has to be real. Counselor Johnson now.
Thanks. I'm probably over my limit on talking, so I'll make this one quick. I don't feel like I need to make the amendment on this, but please, just as a favor to all of us, I think we'd like to see it. If you do give the monies out, could you give us a report next meeting on the money that you distributed?
I believe your previous amendment requires that.
Okay, I just wanted to clear that up.
Is there any further discussion or an amendment before I suggest one? First, is there, is there a motion to amend? Otherwise, I will call for unanimous consent to amend the number to 24,999, but we can't amend it twice. Hearing none. Is there unanimous consent to amending this motion to changing the number from $25,000 to 24,999? Hearing no objection, that motion to amend passes. We are now discussing the amendment to the resolution which authorizes 24,999 to be spent by the mayor immediately, but no later than the next council meeting. Further discussion on this amendment? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. The motion carries. We are on the main motion. I am not aware of any other suggested amendments. So final discussion or other amendments? Counselor Grasky.
Curiosity, a couple, it's more about the breakdown of the overall balance rate when we come to the next meeting, wherever that is. I don't know if we feel as a council that breaking up that amount instead of sending it all out, I don't know. I'm just trying to think of the longevity that we can make out of this program unless we feel that, you know, whatever the remainder is, we have that all available through the grant application? Or are we doing, I mean, I'm not trying to make this more complicated. I'm just trying to make sure that we're getting these settings in, you know, continuation. You know, this isn't something that just happened last week. This has been kind of, you know, about a month or so of buildup. So I don't know how to really clarify that or if it's another amendment, but.
You're suggesting a lesser amount for, say, a first round?
I, yeah, I am, because I think that the second, there's going to be need post holidays. But I also don't, I'm just trying to put a perspective out there. Otherwise, if this is cashed out in one grant, I guess I'm, I don't know. I'm trying to avoid from my experience that there's a lot of non-perishables that are bought and not really used. I'm trying to figure out as someone with just a small amount of volunteerism experience that I'd want this to succeed as it, you know, helps build that area where it's lacking to make sure that we're kind of setting these programs up for success because we have that option, so.
Considering this program has to come before the council anyways at its next meeting, what I'd suggest, if you want to phase the program and not spend it all at once, reduce the total number. If the amendment reduces the total number, what that would allow us to do is take a first round of grants up to that amount, and no more than that amount. And then if I come to you and I say, listen, I spent it, the request overwhelmed that amount, but here's my recommendation to spend, say, $100,000, whatever number you choose. Because that will be on the agenda, we can then re-up the program if we see more need. So I think to accomplish what you're suggesting, an amendment to reduce the total amount in the first resolution from $200,000 to something else, that would accomplish that and would be in order. Right now, yes.
Okay, I guess I would. I wasn't really thinking of a number offhand. I guess I was more interested in what that balance would be at the next meeting. So I don't know if that's divided in half, what that balance is. I'm really not super keen on something. I guess I wasn't thinking I was going to walk into this, but it just kind of came to me while we're sitting here, and I just feel kind of strongly towards making sure we're keeping a little longevity out of this.
And I mean, I'm not opposed to an amendment like this. The, if, say you went from 200,000 to 100,000, that 100,000 doesn't disappear. It's still going to be in the Economic Development Fund, and if you want it in two weeks, you can take it in two weeks. If you just want to get eyes on the program and see just how big the need is, if you want to push folks to sharpen their pencils and apply for smaller grants, that's perfectly fine. You know, I do expect that whatever number we put out there, we're going to release. I think we'll get grant applications in that amount.
Yeah, and I don't want to sound like I'm trying to cut the program in half. By all means, that's not my intentions. I just, you know, I'm curious to see what'll happen. And I'm really happy that this is in front of us, and I guess I, maybe it's something we can figure out at the next meeting, but I guess let's just see what we get with the applications in, and then maybe we can go from there.
It is also, both options work. You can cut the number right now, or you can do nothing and then only award so much at the next meeting. It would be perfectly, be a little extreme, but if you just cut all the grant applications in half. I mean, I certainly hear your concern about, we don't want to look like we're funding less, but as I mentioned before, I didn't apply any scientific process to coming up with the number 200,000. So if you want a phased approach, it's not a reasonable. And if it causes you concern because the need is greater than whatever number you say right now, two weeks you can put more money in. So I wish I could give you better direction, but you have got to say a number or?
No, I appreciate it, because if this 25 flies, then I think we have a good temperature of what we're walking into. At the same time, a lot can change then as well. I just wanted us to have that discussion. At the same time, a lot can change then as well. I just wanted us to have that discussion of those options, how we can try to make sure that we're using this fund as positively and as lucrative in a way to help support this overall mission. So I'm okay marinating on that, I'm gonna step back, so thank you.
Any further discussion? We are on the main motion as amended. Counselor Swinney.
I wouldn't say this is going to be for the main motion, but at what period of time are we going to allow ourselves to have the guide rails written in stone or written?
The guardrails that are written in stone, if this resolution is adopted, as is, even you cannot spend more than two hundred thousand dollars without another resolution and none of us can spend it or even accept applications passed December thirty-first.
I'm not thinking of the aggregate amount as much as I am awarding a grant, whatever we want to call it, to an individual. Here would be my example. We want to be more efficient and as effective and have it go as far as we can to serve the people that we're trying to serve. I get that. But if somebody has a food shelf and they apply for five thousand dollars and the most that they give out a month in the past three years has been five hundred a month, I would hardly award them five thousand because they can't handle it, okay? They, we have to have some guide rails on what their, what their volume was before this started or some criteria. That's why I'm saying some guide rails and that would be one. I think we'll get, I agree with you, and I think we'll get a lot of applicants, and that we should, I mean, that's great. But we do have to have some, somebody says, I'll apply for ten grand and all the year they only gave out three thousand in their food shelf all year. Well, they can't handle that, or they're not prepared to handle it. That'd be my opinion, so the guide rails are gonna be important.
And I think past practice of this council is going to be very relevant. It's hard to write it in stone, but you have imposed hard, hard restrictions that are not written in stone in many applications. We now have a few years of experience awarding grants and I have had the privilege of sitting at the committee tables when those were decided and counselors were pretty strict about the way in which we award money and demanding accountability and transparency and fiscal responsibility for those organizations. As I mentioned earlier in the meeting, I don't want to bring you a grant application that can't pass. And so I'll just be applying the rules that you yourselves have imposed on previous grant applications. So I, but I agree with the scenario you described, a very small food shelf shouldn't be applying for ten times the amount they spend in a year just because the opportunity is there. We want to meet the need as best we can, but they have to show us that they can meet the need. Further discussion, we are on the main motion. Hearing none, the motion is on, the question is on adoption of the resolution as it has been amended twice. Does everybody understand the question? Okay, then all those in favor of approving the resolution as amended, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. The motion carries. Thank you, Counselors.
Item six point three is committee appointments and to the Superior Housing Authority appointing Millie Brownsville for a five-year term expiring May twenty thirty.
Motion is by Counselor Elm, second by Counselor Harris, is there discussion? Counselor Swinney.
I see Millie is in the audience, perhaps you would like to make a word or two?
She might. We have never subjected any appointee to that. So I would, I would recommend against it.
I got my point across, she is in the audience.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. The motion carries. Thank you, Counselors.
Item seven point one is the business of the Human Resources Committee with a meeting held on October twentieth is the report from the chair.
Thank you. The Human Resource Met, we had some interesting discussion, one thing that some things have to be voted on. We approved the, updated to the non-union salary and benefit policy a bereavement leave to allow the language for attending a coworker's funeral or whatever, so. And that voted unanimously and I think we did some good work there. We also approved the updated non-union salary and wage benefit plan, the paid time off leave. Appendix A and B, this was a new hire, how they're gonna pay back in case they don't make their, make it through the probationary period. We required to approve of a part-time community service officer, paid intern. The motion was made and seconded, so we need that approval. We also, the two, the police union and the firemen are in negotiations right now, so that's going on. I haven't heard what's happening, but something may happen beyond what I know, but I, my understanding, they're still going on in negotiations. So, and other than that, we went through our normal items received and filed, so I would go to the clerk to have her read the things that have to be approved tonight. Thank you.
All right, that first item is to approve an update to the non-union salary and benefit policy handbook under section thirteen, bereavement leave to add language to allow for attendance at a funeral of a coworker.
Motion is by Counselor Moffett, second by Counselor Grasky. Counselor Swinney, did you have anything further? Any discussion on this item? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Seven point one point two is to approve the update to the non-union salary and benefit policy handbook under section fifteen B, paid time off, paid leave, appendices A and B, new hire employees to clarify repayment of paid leave when an employee does not complete probation.
Motion is by Counselor Grasky, second by Counselor Moffett, is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. The motion carries.
Item seven point one point three is to approve part-time community service officer paid internship program.
Motion is by Counselor Johnson, second by Counselor Elm, is there discussion? Counselor Harris.
Yeah, just a question, what are we looking at? I thought I read hiring two part-timers for this position, is that correct?
The budget includes, I think that, the full budget would be two, so it's up to.
Okay, sure, okay, thank you.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. The motion carries.
Item seven point three is the business of the Finance Committee with meetings held on October twenty-eighth and a special meeting held this evening is the report from the chair.
Yes, thank you. We had a reasonably short meeting, this last meeting, is the Finance Director in the house?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Item number one, I, these are some, perhaps one might consider them mundane, but we had some discussion over and you can just mention them briefly. We had the reserve analysis done by our Finance Director and we had a question-answer period. If you want to come up and answer any questions, please, thank you. Maybe you could just first explain what, what that is, so everybody understands.
Sure, so let me talk gently about the general fund reserve and what exactly we're looking at with this. So Accounting one oh one, assets minus liabilities equals, you know, ending net assets. So our goal with our ending net assets is to have, sorry, Mayor, I'm having a little brain fart here, one-third, three months?
Thirty-two percent.
Thirty-two percent, thank you. Sorry, I've been to a lot of council meetings lately that I haven't been here, so my mind's a little fuzzy this morning, or this afternoon. So we're trying, we have that thirty-two percent, that's the goal, that's our reserve per ordinance. Once we go beyond that money, anything is, can be reallocated elsewhere within the budget. So the reserve analysis had a lot of conversation this year as to how we were looking at it. With internet assets, we kind of have a couple of different balances in there. We have one that's labeled as a non-spendable balance and then we have an unrestricted balance. There's more net assets categories in that, but we're just gonna keep it simple. So the non-spendable balance is, what that balance is, is that's negative money that the TIPS owe the general fund. So when we start our new tax increment financing district, they typically are borrowing money from the general fund. For the most reason, JRB meeting, you know, these TIPS are very strong, this money they borrowed is likely, or not likely, will be paid back, those schedules have been determined. So in previous years, we haven't considered that non-spendable category as part of our reserve. What we kind of changed up this year, following some advice from our auditors and talking to elders about the situation, our debt advisors, municipal advisors, we included that as part of the reserve calculation. So that's where kind of the change is happening this year, if anybody was curious. And I'm happy to stand up here and answer any questions that everyone has about this.
Counselor, I do, with the, with that allocating the unreimbursed money from the TIPS and counting that as an asset in the, in the reserve, do, and I know this was at the recommendation of elders, but do you feel that that meets the definition or meets the qualification by our, our own ordinance for reserves? And the only reason I ask that is because in the, in the ordinance that we have for, for the reserves, when it was, when it was established, what level we have, it, one of the last bullet points, it says that the reserves are intended to provide a safeguard in the event the general fund goes over budget and consumes a portion of the reserves. If we're allocating unreimbursed TIF expenses, we can't use that money in the event that the budget, you know, goes over, over budget and we need to consume some of those reserves. And so, because it's basically, it's basically an IOU from the, from the individual TIPS. We put up the money upfront and, you know, we're gonna get, you know, reimbursed. But to, to allocate that and put that in the reserves, do you feel that that follows our own ordinance? I know, I know accounting practice, it's, it's fine, right? But do you think that that follows the, the reserves? Because then also in the, in the ordinance for our reserves, it, it says all excess funds will be directed to the reserves, but these aren't excess funds. These are basically IOUs that the individual TIPS owe us to, you know, to reimburse, you know, for expenses that we incurred.
Sure, so I'm sure Mayor Payne's also probably gonna chime in on this comment, but that's why I kind of started off my conversation of assets minus liabilities equals our net assets, and our net assets are what we base our reserves off of. I bring this up because assets just aren't cash, assets are equipment. There's a bunch of things within the general funds, there are loans from other people, there are investment accounts. And not all of this is like instantly liquid money. And the one point I want to bring out here is cash flow does not equal our reserves exactly. We can have a problem with cash flow and not have a problem with our reserve balance. I hope that makes sense to everybody.
Yeah, because I mean, right, I mean, you and I, we've talked, you know, over the last couple, you know, weeks about this in, in more detail than I, than I probably ever thought I'd want to talk about it. But, but when, when we look at the, the policy that was, you know, based on our ordinance, it's all excess funds will be directed to the reserve, but these aren't excess funds. These are IOUs, which are basically inflating how much we have in the reserve because it's not, it's not even like we have a, we took in those excess funds and we got a CD with it or we, you know, we took in the excess funds and we invested it, you know, over here. Where it's, it's not, they're not even excess funds, they're not funds at all, they're basically in, in IOU that these TIPS owe us. And I realize it's an asset, you know, from all, all accounting, you know, practices that, that's an asset. But to, I guess where, where you lose me is when it's counting that asset as reserve money that by the ordinance can be, you know, drawn down in emergency, emergency purposes. Because there, there wouldn't be a way at all to draw that money down for emergency purposes. If it's locked up into a CD, you can always cancel that, you know, that CD early and use that. But these aren't, these aren't even funds, I mean, these are basically an IOU.
I think it's important to note, there's a difference between excess funds and the reserve. The reserve is not excess funds, the reserve is assets minus liabilities, as the Finance Director explained. Excess funds are excess revenues over expenditures for any fiscal year. And when that occurs, the purpose of this policy is to determine how those are directed. So before, before, the way in which you determine how those are directed is by first analyzing the size of the reserve, the reserve being expenditures minus liabilities. If that calculation, expenditures minus liabilities, is equal to or greater than thirty-two percent of the operating expenses, operating budget for the current fiscal year, then any excess funds that exist may be spent elsewhere. If it is less than that number, the excess funds must go to increasing the size of the reserve.
Right, if it's under the thirty-two percent, right. And so, and I'll, I don't want to go off, you know, too much, you know, because it's more also kind of related to the, get to the budget, my question there. But if, so the, so the reserves, they have, they have to be out, thirty-two percent of the operating budget, which is like eleven million, I had it pulled up. The minimum needed is eleven million four hundred ninety-nine. And out of those, those TIPS, those IOUs from the, from the TIPS, it's, if I remember right, a couple million, two point one, something like that?
Two and a half.
Two and a half. And so, so we're taking our reserve number and inflating it two and a half million to, you know, to figure out if we've got a surplus or a deficit to either return or keep the money in the reserves. And so if we're inflating our reserves two and a half million dollars, one could assume that those TIPS are, must be extremely healthy or no?
Yes, that, so this would be a different conversation if I had an extremely unhealthy TIP that had a very large cash loan from the general fund. I'd likely not be getting the advice from elders and the auditors that should be included in my, my net assets looking at those reserves. I mean, it would still be included, but the, you know, the fear of having to write those off would be much higher.
So the cumulative total in the, in the TIPS, are we doing well or are we?
Yes, the TIPS are overall doing well. Well, you know, that, that asset's not being generated instantly, they're gonna have to pay that asset back over time. It's solidly, per the projections, going to be paid back.
Right, yeah, over, you know, ten years, you know, whatever it is.
No fear that I'm gonna be writing off that receivable in any way.
No, and I don't either, the, you know, the TIPS, the way they're structured, it's very, it's very smart, very, it's fiscally responsible, you know, with the pay-as-you-go system, but I guess the point I'm making is the, if the TIPS are inflating the reserves two and a half million, the, what's the cumulative total cash balance in those TIPS?
Well, it's at the end of twenty twenty-four, it's a negative seventy-six thousand dollars. Again, I want to make that very clear, though, cash balance does not equal all of your assets, cash is just one piece of that. So, you know, if we, if the city was struggling with cash flow too, that would be a whole another thing to bring into this question. I believe the way we, you know, budget is responsible and reflective to cash flow.
And I think that's where the biggest red flag goes, you know, goes for me is when we are inflating our reserve number two and a half million dollars based on seven accounts that hold a negative seventy-four thousand dollar cash balance, I guess is, is my point.
Are there further questions for the Finance Director? Hearing none, I believe we, unless the chairman had more updates, we can proceed to the recommendations. Chairman Swinney, if you could turn your light on, please.
Thank you. If you could just briefly speak on three point two, which is the investment summary for the third quarter. I think that's important for everybody to know.
Yeah, I can talk a little bit about the investment summary and where we're kind of at with that. So one of the key things I want to point out in our investment summary is you're actually seeing our investment balances start seeing reductions in that. That's on purpose. What's kind of happening is we received seventeen million dollars in ARPA funds in twenty twenty-two and. And we are currently at like our largest drawdown period. We have broadband coming to an end. We have other big projects coming to an end. So we're purposely pulling cash out of our investment account to, to pay for those things that, that money was originally held for. Um, I think there's a few other large projects too that are sitting there that are, are kind of all being paid out. Again, this is what's kind of supposed to happen. Um, part of that, that's not, that, that forty-four million dollar investment sitting there, that's not just, um, reserve dollars. That's all of, you know, the, most city money we can invest at a time responsibly. So, um, overall, though, talk about interest rates a little bit. I think interest rates slowly going to start creeping down here. You know, we're still buying CDs in the fore currently, and that's really good. Um, trying to, to get, uh, uh, we're trying to ladder our investments properly so we constantly have funds coming due at any time. Um, but we're always looking and exploring ways to, to, how can we more effectively do that? Whether it's using more short-term secu- securities, uh, you know, expanding our ladder out to that seven-year period, which we can for our policies, things like that.
Thank you. The next item, I just want to briefly speak. It's the Douglas County Historical Society. We're going to hold that. Um, they came to us last meeting and presented some information to us. And they're working, we're working with them, they're working with us, been very helpful trying to get a grant application done. And so, uh, we're on the right track. So, in fact, they asked us to hold that, so kudos to them. And I suspect that that is probably the only thing that we need. Um, one piece of information, we are working on a Billings Park Association lease. And we will have that done and available for next meeting. So, the clerk, I, I don't think I have anything that needs to be.
Mr. Sweeney, if you have no objection, Counselor Johnson may have a question for the finance director.
Uh, I, I heard you just say something to my, um, to what you just, a question to what I was thinking. Uh, you said we were working on the approval of the Civic Center Association. It is in the agenda tonight as a recommendation, but it was a meeting that was held tonight?
Right, I'll, I'll address that when we get there. We'll go through these and I'll.
All right, I just wanted to make sure we.
Right, right, thank you. Theo, okay, Counselor Sweeney, uh, what is your pleasure? Uh, did you want the clerk to read each of the recommendations?
Please, please.
That's seven point three, part two is to approve the twenty twenty-six health insurance fund budget and brand new.
Motion is by Counselor Herrick, the second by Counselor Elm, is their discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor please signify by saying aye. Those opposed say no, the motion carries.
Seven point three point three is to approve a two-year contract extension with the Superior Youth Organization for management services at the city-owned Hayes Court Ball Field Complex.
Motion is by Counselor Elm, the second by Counselor Johnson, is their discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor please signify by saying aye. Those opposed say no, the motion carries.
Seven point three point four is to approve the twenty twenty-five tax increment finance district TID Blue Water Flats appropriation.
Motion is by Counselor Elm, second by Counselor Grasky, is their discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor please signify by saying aye. Those opposed say no, the motion carries. Okay, counselors regarding the Billings Park Civic Association li- uh, land lease. Uh, Counselor Johnson, Chairman Sweeney pointed out, there is a meeting to discuss this tonight. My understanding is that no recommendation has been made. Uh, it is rare for us to do this. We can do this, where we put a notice up for a meeting that's going to occur today if something is timely. Typically, we would then ask the chairman to deliver that recommendation, as long as we've noticed it on the agenda. That said, again, my understanding is that the finance committee has not made a recommendation. Therefore, if you wanted to discuss this, you would need to make a motion to, uh, to pull from committee. I do not recommend that. I don't believe the finance committee is going to recommend that. So I would suggest you take no action on this, except that the clerk has requested a five-minute recess to work on a teams meeting, and it's also been kind of a long meeting so far. So is there a motion for recess? Uh, there's a motion by Counselor Herrick, second by Counselor Elm, is that for a five-minute recess? Uh, the motion is for a five-minute recess. Uh, all those in favor please signify, I'm sorry, is their discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor please signify by saying aye. Those opposed say no, the motion carries. We will reconvene at seven fifty-one.
Hey, uh, Mr. Jason Cirque, can you hear me on Teams? Jason, could you try speaking again, please? Nothing, okay, try the other one. All right, one more time, Mr. Cirque. I see his picture. No, it's got to be the HDMI splitter. All right, one more time, Mr. Cirque. Yeah, but it's coming out the computer, not the speakers. Are you signed into Teams, Becky? I'm trying to figure out where it's coming.
We'll reconvene in one minute, counselors.
Right. Uh, Mr. Becken and Cirque and our visitors on Teams. Unfortunately, it sounds like you can hear us, but we're having a speaker issue here, so, um. Good luck.
If, if we desperately needed the advice of one of our staff that was on Teams, we will really quickly, I think all of them have my cell phone number, we will figure it out. It is seven fifty-one. Uh, I will call the council back to order and ask the clerk to resume our agenda at item seven point four.
Seven point four is the Business of Licensing and Fees Committee with a meeting held on October twenty-seventh is the report from the chair.
Yeah, there is. It, um, so the, so the first item of business, not on the agenda, uh, because it's not council approval, but, um, Dwarf King Taxi, it's, they're, they're the only taxi that in, in the, that's able to pick up, or no?
No, uh, we actually do have one that was recently approved two meetings ago and a new sole proprietor taxi cab business that has applied.
Okay, perfect. Um, so they, their, their initial renewal, um, was, was, was declined by the, by the clerk's office. Um, not anything about the, you know, with, with the company, but our, our ordinance has the minimum liability limits at two hundred and fifty thousand per person and Dwarf King only has it at, um, a hundred thousand dollars per person. And so the, you know, the, the hearing here was to see if the License and Fees Committee could, you know, could reverse that. But with them not, not even meeting the minimum, uh, requirements, we, we were unable to and we chose not to. So the, um, the, the, the simple solution for that is the, um, they, they just need to increase their limits of liability, but they, they've been having difficulty with their current, um, insurance carrier. Then the, I think it's on the agenda. Um, yeah, the, the massage therapy. So it, it was brought to the, the clerk's office attention that one of our ordinances, the way it was kind of worded and the way it was kind of, um, it kind of, kind of given out, the, it was a license for massage therapy, could have allowed somebody who didn't go through the schooling, didn't get their certification through the state to practice in the city of Superior. And so the, you know, to, in, in an effort to avoid us giving the appearance that we're licensing something that's done by a completely different, you know, regulatory authority, um, we're just getting rid of that. That, that, that component of it, the, the license for a brick and mortar, um, you know, a massage therapy facility is, you know, we're, we're still keeping that. This was more for just like an individual, um, you know, licensee. And so getting rid of that to clean it up, just to kind of clear out any confusion that we're, we're trying to give licenses without it actually being approved by the state. And then, um, and then the, the last one there is also just a cleanup for the, um, the building inspection. Kind of the same, on the same lines is in our, uh, in, in our resolution, we had the fee structure and that fee structure can only be in ordinance, which it already is. But it wa- it was redundant and we, we can't have the, um, the, the fee structure in the, the resolution. So it was just a couple, a couple cleanup things there.
All right, that first item is seven point four, part one, to approve an ordinance amending City Code Chapter seventy-four licenses, permits, and business regulations, Article five, massage therapy business practitioner, to remove the city license requirement for massage therapy practitioners to comply with state statutes four sixty point seventeen.
Motion is by Counselor Herrick, the second by Counselor Grasky, is their discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor please signify by saying aye. Those opposed say no, motion carries.
Seven point four point two is to approve a resolution adopting a revised building inspection permit fee schedule.
Motion is by Counselor Herrick, second by Counselor Fantasy, is their discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor please signify by saying aye. Those opposed say no, motion carries.
Seven point five is the Business of the Public Safety Committee with a meeting held on October sixteenth is the report from the chair.
Yeah, just real quick, I've already given a report on this meeting. This is merely some, this is the actual approval. It was a, a timing issue that wasn't ready to get to council, uh, but it's here now tonight. Uh, it, it essentially it amends the Chapter eighty-six City Code regarding possession of weapons and discharge of firearms. This is specific to the Grassi Point area, uh, to remove it from the list of, of all allowable waterfall hunting areas. The map's in the packet. The change, of course, is recommended by, by the Public Safety Committee. Uh, this is, area continues to see more development within the proximity of the businesses that are there. Uh, so all the other hunting zones are remaining unaffected. So that is the recommendation that is here before us tonight, and I'll make that motion.
Uh, we actually need the clerk to read the ordinance, please.
That is to approve an ordinance amending City Code Chapter eighty-six, Article three, Division one, Section eighty-six seventy-four H four E, offenses and miscellaneous provisions, possessions of weapons, discharge of firearms as it relates to hunting waterfall within the waters of the shore of Grassi Point.
The motion was by Counselor Herrick? Uh, Counselor Elm made the motion, Counselor La Dean made the second, is their discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor please signify by saying aye. Those opposed say no, the motion carries.
Moving on to reports without recommendations at this time, are there any further committee or commission reports to be made?
Counselor Ludwig.
Yeah, I have a report from the Urban Forestry Tree Board Meeting of October sixteenth. First of all, the board approved a, a draft request for a proposal for management of invasive vegetation species in the municipal forest, uh, pending secure, securing the necessary, uh, funding. Um, Board Member Coffin reported that he is now a, um, a member of COGS. So he's planning to revise, I'm sorry, he's planning, um, to strengthen Superior's influence and focus on our local trail systems with the COGS organization. Um, the other thing I wanted to bring up is, um, I know we didn't have a, um, a Parks and Rec report last time, but I wanted to bring up that, um, the wonderful job that our staff did, and this was reported at the Parks and Rec meeting too, as well as Urban Forestry, um, Tree Board meeting. Um, wonderful job that our staff did, our Parks and Rec staff did on updating our municipal forest trails. Um, I believe that the map is still hanging in the conference room two oh four, if you really want to take a look at it. Um, but it part, it retains the, um, original colored trails for consistency that, um, that the concurrent users are aware of. But they're also incorporating tree-themed names to delineate the difficulty for the, uh, ski trails. And plans are in the future to, um, have animal-themed names for the mo- mountain bike trails. Enhancements to the map include introduction of Ojibwe names and topographic shading for improved clarity, along with a light bulb icon on the map to indicate our lighted ski trails. The map also highlights camping opportunities at Dwight's Point, aiming to promote its use and potential recognition as part of the National Water Trail. Three formats of the map will be produced. Um, large maps for our kiosk displays, smaller intersectional signs, and foldable pamphlets for distribution at trailheads and warming shelters. Um, the committee, our board also discussed utilizing GPS shape files, um, considering the possibility of sharing trail data with platforms like Trail Forks and All Trails. And the last thing I want to report was, um, our tree planting for this, for the twenty twenty-five season. Um, Superintendent Wendlin reported that two hundred and fifty new trees were planted, thirty-one trees were removed, and they were primarily diseased ash trees, and three hundred and seventeen trees were pruned. Plans are in the work to order two hundred trees for our planting season in twenty twenty-six. And then the last thing, a second round of goat grazing was successfully conducted in Billings Park to manage the buckthorn. Plans are in place to continue this biennial grazing for additional two years, complemented by mechanical and manual remover techniques to enhance effectiveness. That's it for my report, thank you.
Are there questions for the chair or any further reports? Hearing on, hearing none, we can move to old business.
And that is approval of the twenty twenty-six budget.
Counselors, this was moved and seconded at the previous meeting and postponed until this meeting, so it is on the floor before you, uh, as previously described. Questions and discussion? Council Fantasy.
Um, question again for Finance Director Ryan Art, and it's kind of piggyback on, piggybacks on the, the last conversation about the TIDS, because it's the, it's the TIDS and the unreimbursable expense that has in- inflated the reserves, and that's why we're able to, to do the, the one point five million dollar transfer, um, in, in this CIP. Is that, is that fair?
Yeah, I would say that one point five million dollars going to CIP is related to that reserve increment.
Okay, and so, are we, i- if that's part of the reserve for, to, for the unreimbursed expenses, part of those unreimbursed expenses, I assume is some, some bonding, um, you know, for, for a couple of the TIDS. Are we paying back that bonding with that? If we're re- if we're reimbursing ourselves now, are we paying off that bonding that we, we took out?
The bonding related to the TIDS?
Yeah.
Yeah, of, of course, like, there's gonna be no reimbursements done to the general fund until that's, you know, till we meet our TID obligations.
Right, but we, so, so we're, we're not, that, this one point five million dollar transfer isn't directly related to the, the unreimbursed expenses, and now we're reimbursing ourselves. It just inflated the, 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 the general fund, or the, or the reserve balance to a point where we had a surplus in there, and then that's just transferred over? We haven't actually done any reimbursement, that's all staying there?
It just looks at our net assets a little differently. I mean, uh, honestly, I'm not opposed to, it, you know, if this is some, a policy thing that needs to be evaluated a little more, and, you know, if this is making this council un- uncomfortable with kind of the new way we're looking at the reserves, I'm more than happy to say that we could take a step back from that and reevaluate that.
A- as am I, uh, however, I would point out that this budget follows our policies as the Finance Director has expressed. The reserve is at thirty-two percent, councilors, uh, our auditor agrees, our financial consultant agrees, our Finance Director agrees. The policy, which I would, I would remind you, I create, I, I proposed that the reserve policy, it is met. We have excess funds, uh, in the amount of something like one point seven million that can be spent. I am, if, if for some reason we're creating a new rule about what does and does not count as reserves, I'm happy to have that conversation, but we've had no less than three conversations about reserve policy at the Finance Committee in the last several months, and this never came up. I don't believe this is an appropriate conversation at the final, at the potential final meeting, or at least the third meeting of, of our budget. All of our financial advisors agree, the reserve obligations are met. This is our reserve, there is no illegitimate money in there, it is all our money. It is the definition of the reserve. We do have excess funds that by our policy can be spent.
And it, 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 never once did I say illegitimate funds, I mean, that was, that, that, that was you, but I, nor, nor have I indicated that we're doing this unethically. I know it's allowed from an accounting standpoint, so I don't, I, I don't understand the defensiveness, but it, it feels like we're budgeting with tomorrow's dollars, a- as these IOUs, to fund today's expenses. And in, in, the, the, these TIDS are wildly healthy, and so I, I'm, I'm not even saying let's, let, let, let's not move forward with the budget process, because I, I don't think we're doing anything unethically, or, or illegal, or against accounting practices. It just, it, it blurs the line between what's actually available and what's anticipated to come in through reimbursable expenses out to the year twenty thirty-two, which is why the, the cumulative cash balance is, i- is in the negative right now, but it's looking like a positive two point some million in the, in the reserve. And so, so, a- again, I'm, I'm not, uh, uh, kind of surprised you, you took it that, 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 that turn there, Mayor, but I'm not, I'm not saying this is unethical or, or, or anything like that. It's just paper money that, because it's an IOU that's being used to fund the, the, the CIP, you know, budget here, to the tune of one point five million. And so, it's... I, I, I think it's, it's important to, you know, to have these conversations when we're talking about one point five million, and I'm, and I'm sorry you took offense to me trying to have this conversation, but, um, I, I think it's, I, I think it's important that we're all on the same page so that we all know where that one point five million's coming from, and the, the citizens know where that one point five million's, um, you know, coming from. And it's not real dollar, tangible dollars, it's IOUs from the TIDS for the future years.
Yeah, I think, uh, what I'm objecting to, you, you're correct, uh, I, I didn't hear you describe it as illegitimate, illegitimate or anything, but I did just hear you describe it as paper money, which it definitely is not. It is a real asset that exists on our books today. And so, while the, the conversation may be worthy, my only argument is that we have had this conversation. There's no reason it can't continue in the coming financial year, uh, but this budget took a great deal of work. And if I seem a bit defensive, it's because I care a great deal about the fiscal health and responsibility of this city. And we've put a, a tremendous amount of work into, uh, presenting it accurately in a transparent way and in a responsible way, not just to appear responsible, but to actually be responsible. Uh, so, it, it, I do want to again assert strongly, we do have excess funds. We have more excess funds than I am proposing spending. I'm actually proposing leaving a certain amount of those in the reserves and growing it, creating a little bit of a buffer in case, uh, we need more money next year. Uh, I, I am very, uh, I'm very proud of this budget, I'm very proud of this policy, and, uh, I, I have been very pleased, as I think you should be all, you should all be, that we have this amount of excess funds to spend, because the policy does direct us to spend it.
Uh, did, are, are you done with that, yeah, on that point?
I am, yes.
Okay, thanks, um, cause I, I, the only reason I asked, I wanted to switch gears. Um, at the, at, at the last, um, council meeting, I had asked if the, so we're, we're expected to bond, um, or in, in the budget, ten million dollars for the fire hall and then up to four for the, uh, irrigation. And I, and I'd asked if the, the bond payments for that, that new debt were gonna be taken out, um, or allocated in the general fund. Can you kind of, can you kind of just explain where we're at with that?
Uh, yes, as I expressed at the last meeting, this budget, the numbers that you see in this budget are correct. Those are the numbers that I am proposing, including the levy number. Uh, if you saw me short circuit a little bit at the last meeting, it's because something did sound strange about, it was your Council Fantasy's description of the presentation, which I, I later found out, prob- I, I don't think I actually looked at the slides, but, uh, we agree it probably was miscommunicate, there was a miscommunication somewhere between myself, the Finance Director, and, uh, Ellers about when exactly we would take out the bonding. Uh, I did not intend to add levy, uh, uh, debt levy to the twenty twenty-six levy. That is not included in my proposed budget, I am not proposing it now, uh, not, I'm proposing no alterations to this. Uh, we, we have already been authorized by council to post the bond for sale. That would be in fiscal year twenty twenty-six, with payments beginning in twenty twenty-seven. There are a number of reasons for that, uh, if, if you have more questions, I can explain more, but as I said at the last meeting, the, the numbers you see in front of you do not need alteration, they are correct. Uh, further questions or discussion on any of our budgets? Council Levine.
Uh, quite, thank you, Chair, a good question regarding, uh, the bonding for the go- the golf course irrigation. I just want a, a quick little question here, um, we're bonding four million dollars for it, um, in, in my conversations with you. Um, I, I believe there's a goal that Niamagi will contribute to this, correct?
That is the goal, I, I can't call that a policy in this meeting. That is our goal, that would be something we'd have to work out, uh, with, you know, through the committee process and through the bonding process. Uh, but yes, I do believe the, the golf course is financially healthy, and I think it can contribute, uh, to its own capital expenses. What is most important for this meeting is that it, it is not strong enough to bond on its own, on its own revenue. So, we are definitely, I am saying you need to be prepared for, and at budget for a full bond coming from the city of Superior, the full risk of that four million dollar bond to pay the whole thing back, back. As we have further conversations though, expect a recommendation from myself or the Finance Director for at least a partial repayment plan from the golf course.
That was gonna be my question, is there a way that we can, I guess, hold their feet to the fire? In, in regards to making them contribute to, to it?
I, I could be wrong, but I don't, I don't think we even have to ask permission, I think it's our policy to make. I mean, we control the budget.
I mean, is it our money, I bet we just take it from them?
I, I mean, I don't think that would be our goal, to just take it from the golf course committee and the golf course fund in general. I mean, we have to remember, what is, you know, of this enterprise fund, what is its goal? What are we doing with it? It's there to support the golf course, and we try to have it earn its own money. I, I don't want to jump too far ahead in this conversation, and I'll, I'll kind of hold off a little bit on it, but we are talking about structuring it in the way that the golf course is contributing, and it's, it's a very active conversation. Um, and, and there's lots of pieces that play into this, because I think as we work through this project and work through some of the difficulties as we keep discovering with this project, um, you know, we don't know what that ending cost is truly gonna be yet. So, there's, there's a lot of big questions out there, questions on cost, questions on how much the golf course can support. Um, you know, maybe it's gonna change the scope of the project somehow. There's still a long way to go on this project. Um, ultimately, you know, we have this joint in twenty twenty-six, um, but it's probably gonna get pushed back to twenty twenty-seven ultimately.
Thank you.
Further questions or discussion? Hearing none, the question is on adoption of the, uh, all of the twenty twenty-six budgets proposed. All those in favor please signify by saying aye. Those opposed say no, motion carries.
Item ten point one is the approval of an appointment for Rainy Day as agent for C A P L Retail Doing Businesses Express Lane located at three eleven Belnam Street, holders of Class B liquor, Class B beer, and cigarette tobacco, and electronic vaping device retail licensing.
The motion is by Council Fantasy, second by Council Anderson, is your discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor please signify by saying aye. Those opposed say no, motion carries.
Ten point two is to approve an ordinance amending City Code Chapter one twelve, Traffic Code Schedule J, accessible parking zones, add accessible do not block signs at fifteen thirty-one Hewitt Avenue.
The motion is by Council L, second by Council Moffett, is their discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor please signify by saying aye. Those opposed say no, motion carries.
Ten point three is to approve an ordinance amending City Code Chapter one twelve, Traffic Code Schedule J, accessible parking zones, to add accessible parking signs at eleven twenty-three Grand Avenue on both sides.
Uh, the motion is by Council Grasky, who made the second, Council L made the second, uh, is their discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor please signify by saying aye. Those opposed say no, motion carries. We have, uh, one person has signed up to speak in public comment, uh, Mr. Jeff Monahan. Uh, please approach the podium, I'll ask you to turn on the light, and you will have exactly three minutes.
Good evening, I just wanna, uh, as, speaking as a citizen, I just want to say thank you to everyone for all your hard work. I think you give people like me confidence in, uh, having a, a city that we can be proud of. I want to acknowledge the history of the shipping industry in Superior, because it's been a long history, of course, since the city was founded. And November tenth, we're approaching an anniversary of the Edmund Fitzgerald sinking. And it's my understanding that the ship was actually loaded here in Superior. And I just wanted to acknowledge that occurrence, that even when we have tragedies like that, we still have a long tradition of safety and strength in that industry. So, I will be participating in some of the events, prayerful events, acknowledging the the people that died that day. But I invite everyone to consider remembering that day um, because of what it means to our community and moving forward for the industry that we, very robust industry that we have here in Superior. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Monahan makes a good point, the Edmund Fitzgerald left Superior's, uh, Burlington Northern Dock number one on November ninth nineteen seventy-five at two PM. And therefore, uh, this Sunday at two PM, we will commemorate that event by, uh, revealing, uh, the historical marker that has now been installed at Barker's Island. So, we, uh, I invite you all to join us for that event shortly before two PM, and we'll recognize the true, by the moment, fifty-year anniversary of the Edmund Fitzgerald leaving on its final voyage. Council Sweeney.
I must mention one more thing, I, I, I wasn't going to, but I, I think it's too important. It's not an actionable item, this is about our hospitalization and dental care, uh, policy. Uh, this is almost unheard of, that, uh, Finance Department and the, and the management of the city is recommending no increase for its employees this year for health insurance and dental insurance. That's, uh, we should all stand up and clap for that, because that's al- almost unheard of, for zero increase. We have a healthy reserves, and so, I just wanted to make a mention so everybody understands that. Whether that'll ever happen again, I don't know, but, uh, zero increase for, uh, next year, thank you.
Is there any further business appropriate for this, this meeting? Hearing none, we are adjourned, thank you, everybody.